The May 16, 2016, meeting of the Anarondale County Council is now back in session. Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council.[14.42][14.42](APPLAUSE). If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reva Road.
Mr. Smith, I believe you have some comments.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, over the last several weeks, I've taken this keen interest on this topic of homelessness. This journey started out as a quest to learn more knowledge on how we, as a county, help the least in our communities and the programs in place to elevate those same individuals. However, my experience shed light on a deeper aspect of being homeless, one of respect and admiration. As an elected official, I've always known that one of our most powerful tools outside of passing a budget is shining the light on an issue that is often overlooked. It's easy sometimes to dismiss men and women who have been bound to the streets. We drive past them, often with curiosity, but quickly move on to other thoughts that consume our minds. I, too, am guilty of seeing them but allowing them to be invisible. This isn't an effort to judge anyone. I'm not perfect, and as Clint and Rick, two men I befriended over the course of the last month stated during my night out, we all make mistakes. Theirs unfortunately led to a life on the streets. And the lessons I learned is that they are just as human as we are. They have dreams and desires to do something great with their lives. Lori, a woman I met during this experience, said she wished people would look at her as if she wasn't a stain on society. It is my hope that going forward, we each take stock in our own worth. I'm proud to call Anarondale County home. This county has many individuals who give tremendously, and they deserve credit for stepping up to address this issue. However, we can and should strive to improve and seek ways to minimize the gaps that exist between the numerous programs. The county executive has already offered his assistance to mitigate this problem, and with the help of this council, I'm hopeful we can make significant and meaningful changes to solve this problem. Mental illness and drug use are big factors that lead to homelessness. Over the coming months, I will work with various organizations and bring to this body solutions I hope we can discuss to help reduce this problem. I was blown away by the generosity I received from a group of individuals who thought I had nothing. Their willingness to sacrifice showed me that I can always do more. So, I leave you with this statement from a friend, Michelle Jones, who commented on my recent activities. She said, "It's usually the people who have the least that are the most generous. They will give you their last because they know how it feels to not have. If they have a sandwich, they will give you half because they know the pain of hunger. If they have cover, they will share it with you because they know the pain of inclement weather. They know the pain but want to make your life easier." People always ask me why I'm always giving something away. My response is, "I may not have a lot, but I have more than I need, and I'm grateful for everything. I am richer than a lot of people, but for the grace of God, I could be looking for food, clothing, and shelter." And so, I ask this council, over the next coming months, to be flexible, and I believe we can certainly do more to address homelessness as it pertains to Anarondale County. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council briefly on any subject not on the printed agenda? We ask that you limit your remarks to two minutes, and please state your name and address for the record. And I do want to remind folks that the budget was on the agenda today, so the agenda is not a topic. The budget cannot be our topic.
Hello, I'm John Baer, B-A-E-R, 10 Taney Avenue, Annapolis. And I'm requesting that the council put pressure on the county executive to reverse the policy that he and the county has preventing many of us from visiting the rivers or the shoreline of the bay. For example, I understand Indian Landing, where the Severn River Trail begins, it's been closed off. And the way they do it is very simple, and this is being seen all up and down the bay, no parking. So, everywhere you see no parking, that's saying, "Stay home, public." For example, in Bay Ridge, you have no parking signs all around. Now, those people park in front of my house. I live in downtown Annapolis, and they can park there two hours, Monday through Friday, and they can park there all day Saturday and Sunday. But I can't park in front of their house. So, I'm just asking, let the general public see the bay, please. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move into the Constant Yield hearing. Mr. Hammond?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the County Council. For the record, I'm John Hammond, the county's Budget Officer. Thank you for the opportunity to kick off tonight's Constant Yield Property Tax Rate hearing. Section 2-205 of the Property Tax Article of the Annated Code of Maryland requires the State Department of Assessments and Taxation to certify to all taxing authorities a constant yield property tax rate which will produce the same revenue in the coming year that was produced in the prior taxable year, exclusive of new construction. The law further provides that if the taxing authority intends to establish a tax rate greater than the constant yield tax rate, it must advertise and hold a public hearing. An advertisement was placed by this county council in the local newspaper, which adheres to the procedures required by state law and was reviewed and approved by the State Department of Assessments and Taxation. Anarondale County's Constant Yield Tax Rate per $100 of assessment for fiscal year 2017 are certified by the State Department of Assessments and Taxation as follows: 90.62 cents for the county excluding Annapolis, 53.7 cents for Annapolis. The FY 2017 proposed budget decreases the real property tax rate from 92.3 cents to 91.15 cents per $100 assessment for the county excluding City of Annapolis. Such a rate is still 1% higher than the constant yield rate of 90.62 cents and will generate $5,319,908 in additional property tax revenues above the constant yield amount. Additionally, the 2017 county tax rate applicable to deceive Annapolis' real property is similarly decreased from 55.2 cents to 54.8 cents per $100 assessment in the proposed budget. Such a rate is still 2% higher than the constant yield rate of 53.7 cents and will generate $606,903 in additional property tax revenue above the constant yield amount. As required by law, this public hearing has been scheduled. Thank you, and good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on the Constant Yield? I ask you to please come forward and state your name and address for the record, and keep your remarks to two minutes, please.
My name is Marvin Robinson. I live at 405 Maple Road, Lythicum, and I'd like to read my statement. Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you this evening. Before I begin, I want to thank you all for your service. It is easy for folk to criticize but difficult or impossible to say thank you, and I'd like to thank you for your time and the work you do for the county. Tonight, I come to plead with you not to increase the property tax rate. It appears to me that even though there is a cap on property taxes, the amount due increases nevertheless. Is it due to the shift in the assessments, which are, of course, set by the county? For those of us who live in Anarondale County and are retired and have a very limited fixed income, any increase in our taxes will hurt, and a good number of families will leave for the tax havens of Florida, Delaware, and other states with lower taxes. I have learned a very hard lesson regarding unintended consequences. Forced long-term residents out. From what I have seen in North County, things will begin to deteriorate. Yards and homes will not be kept up. Schools will soon be faced with overcrowding. Public areas become overgrown because local volunteer residents no longer donate their time to pick up and clean up the grounds. Look at several counties, communities in North Anarondale, Kenton, in North County, and you will see exactly what I am talking about. Other unintended consequences of living in North County include light rail. Prior to its arrival, Cromwell Field had nice shops. Most are gone now, and the giant store has to keep a security officer on duty at all times. I seldom go there without being asked for money, and I never visit after dark. Another example is Arondale Mills. Maryland Live has introduced an element that was not there before the casino came. And I guess...
Please summarize.
I saw this in one of the meetings that we went to, and it was talking about a 1% decrease in the property taxes, and then I saw this, which basically is telling me that my taxes are going to go up. I'm afraid I'm going to have to join the exiting seniors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, let's say something.
Mr. Grassley.
Sir, before you head away, you call my office tomorrow, okay? We have a plan and program that addresses situations like yours, and as long as you make the income requirements, your taxes will remain fixed until the day your property is sold, okay? So, call my office tomorrow, and we'll address your problem, okay? You're welcome.
All right, thank you. The county council will set the property tax rate for Anarondale County and the City of Annapolis at a meeting beginning at 7:00 PM on Monday, June 20, 2016, in these chambers. The rate may exceed the Constant Yield tax rate. May have a motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on resolutions 2716 and 2116 through 2616, and bill numbers 2316, 2426, and 2816 through 3016 out of order. So, move, Mr. Chairman. Second. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Grassley.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Perutka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 2716 is passed.
Great. Please read the title of resolution 2716.
Resolution approving the continued service of Carissa M. Gallin as Acting Director, Department of Aging and Disabilities.
So, move. Did you read the title?
Yeah, I did.
Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick and the county executive's office. This resolution is to continue with Ms. Gallin's service as acting director of the Office of Aging and Disabilities will begin June 1st, and it will be valid through September 30, 2016. She was originally named acting director of the office on April 1st, and that term will expire June 1st, and as the council knows, that her term must be renewed by the council. We would ask for your support of this.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we're opening up the public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on resolution 2716? Seeing the movement in the audience, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution 2716.
Resolution approving the continued service of Carissa M. Gallin.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Grassley.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Perutka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 2716 is passed.
Please read the title of resolution 2116.
Resolution confirming a nomination to the Board of Trustees of the Public Library Association of Annapolis and Anarondale County Incorporated.
Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, as I begin my talk here, Bernie Marzick from the county executive's office. Emily Brandenburg is here in the audience as well. Resolution 2116 submits Charles Mayer Jr., who is a resident of District 2, to the Anarondale County Public Library Board of Trustees for a three-year term. Mr. Mayer is retired from the National Security Agency, and he currently serves in the Board of Mayor's Florist in Pasadena and was a former president of the Pasadena Business Association. In December of 2015, the Library Board of Trustees updated bylaws to alter the Board of Trustees' membership. This board will now be nine members appointed by the board itself and eight members who are considered county appointees. Seven of these eight county appointees are to represent each of the county's council matic districts, and the new bylaws further state the county executive will nominate them, these seven appointees, to the council, and the council will confirm their appointment by resolution. There is no geographic representation currently for District 2 because the board recently announced the resignation of one of its members. Mr. Mayer is a resident of District 2, and we would ask for your support of this resolution.
Great. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Walker.
Mr. Marzick, is the administration taking suggestions from the council, or are they just picking their own people?
With Mr. Mayer, I believe he came through our appointments office, but...
Well, I mean, I have no beef with him. I'm just asking for clarity for in the future when somebody, and there's a seat open in seven.
If you have recommendations, we would be more than willing to listen to them.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Trumpbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, this is the District 2 representative, and so, I mean, I'd like to ask the council member from District 2, were you involved in this, or do you support the gentleman in there putting forward?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Cool.
I don't have any issue, but thanks for looking out. I appreciate it.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we're opening up the public hearing. Anyone here wishing to speak on 2116? Seeing no movement, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution 21...
Resolution confirming a nomination to the Board of Trustees of the Public Library Association of Annapolis and Anarondale County.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Grassley.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Perutka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 2116 is passed.
All right, we'll be holding a joint public hearing for resolution numbers 2216 through 2616. Madam Secretary, please read the title of the resolution.
Resolution 2216. Resolution approving the declaration of certain county-owned property located at 1231 Juniper Street in Avalon Shores in Shadyside, Maryland as surplus property. Resolution 2316. Resolution approving the declaration of certain county-owned property near Dale's Way Drive in the Dales in Pasadena, Maryland as surplus property. Resolution 2416. Resolution approving the declaration of certain county-owned property near the intersection of Harmony Avenue and Alameda Parkway in Belvidere and Arnold, Maryland as surplus property. Resolution 2516. Resolution approving the declaration of certain county-owned property near the intersection of Harmony Avenue and Buena Vista Avenue in Belvidere and Arnold, Maryland as surplus property. Resolution 2616. Resolution approving the declaration of certain county-owned property near the intersection of Peken Road and Edwin Rayner in Pasadena, Maryland as surplus property.
All right, thank you. Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick and the county executive's office. With me at the table is Christine Romans and Samantha Harris from Central Services, as well as Jason Federman from the Office of Law. The next five resolutions, 2216 through 2616, are part of the county executive's comprehensive review of county-owned property and parcels that we have determined whether or not the county ownership of these parcels is warranted. We've identified this first parcel, which is located in Shadyside. It's a .057 acres of property as being surplus, and the council has been provided a map of the surrounding area as part of the package toward this resolution. And if this is approved by the council, the Real Estate Division will proceed with disposing of this property and all future properties that we're discussing here through resolution 2616. We ask for your support of this resolution and be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Walker.
Ms. Harris, I'm assuming that this, did somebody approach us about surplusing this or is this something we're going? I know that there was a comment in the county executive's speech during the budget process about getting rid of surplus property. Is there, why specifically this one? Was there any issues with it?
Yes, there was a neighbor by the name of Michael Perkins that's interested in purchasing it, so we explained to him that there is a process, and this is the beginning of the process.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Perutka.
Can I just ask, what, is that the usual disposition? In other words, we're declaring it now to be surplus. Could you just briefly describe then what happens?
Sure, once the council, thank you. Once the council has declared a particular piece of property as surplus to the county's needs, we then have it appraised. We then go ahead and do, we have four disposal methods that we can choose from. I would tell you, the majority of the time, we advertise it for public sale, take the best bid. If, for some reason, the bids come back and they are lower than what it was appraised for, we come back to the council and ask your permission again to verify that we should, in fact, be disposing of this property.
Okay, so, the ultimate end of these properties is that they're going to go back into private hands.
Correct.
And then they presumably add to the tax base, et cetera. Appreciate it, thank you.
All right, move to the next one.
Sure, resolution 2316 is for a .357 acre property in the Dales in Pasadena. It was previously used as a water tank site for DPW, and Department of Public Works determined it no longer had a need for this property.
Very good. Next one.
24, resolution 2416 is a property located in Arnold in the Belvidere community, and this is a .0356 acre property. It was previously used as a raw water well by the Department of Public Works, and over the years, Public Works has expanded the water system to meet the growing needs of the county, and it's declared that this property is no longer necessary.
All right, 25.
Resolution 2516 is a property located in Arnold in the Belvidere community. Again, this property is .104 acres. This was also previously used as a raw water well for the Department of Public Works.
And 26.
Resolution 2616 is a property located in Pasadena. It's .0895 acres, and a budding property owner asked for us to consider surplusing this property, and after reviewing it, we determined we did not need, no longer needed this property. So, that's what resolution 2616 is.
Very good. Any discussion on any of these bills before we open up to the public? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and start the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on any of these resolutions, 2216 through 26? Seeing no movement, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution 2216.
Resolution approving the declaration of county-owned property located at 1231 Juniper Street in Avalon Shores as surplus property.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Grassley.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Perutka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 2216 is passed.
Please read resolution 2316.
Resolution approving the declaration of certain county-owned property near Dale's Way Drive in the Dales in Pasadena, Maryland as surplus property.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Grassley.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Perutka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 2416 is passed.
Please read resolution 2516.
Resolution approving the declaration of certain county-owned property near the intersection of Harmony Avenue and Buena Vista Avenue in Belvidere and Arnold, Maryland as surplus property.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Grassley.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Perutka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 2516 is passed.
Please read the title of resolution 2616.
Resolution approving the declaration of certain county-owned property near the intersection of Peken Road and Edwin Rayner in Pasadena, Maryland as surplus property.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Grassley.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Perutka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 2616 is passed.
I do want to go back on something we talked about earlier. We do have, apparently do have an amendment on the Constant Yield, so the county council will set the property tax rate for Anarondale County and the City of Annapolis at a meeting beginning at 7:00 PM on June 15.
No, not at 7:00.
What time? 1:00. I'm just reading the script. 1 o'clock.
I think it's 9:00.
It's got to be right.
Hold on.
Joanne, look at the calendar.
(LAUGHING).
June 15 is 9 o'clock.
Okay, 9:00 a.m.
So, the county council will set the property tax rate for Anarondale County and the City of Annapolis at a meeting beginning at 9:00 a.m. on June 15, 2016, in these chambers. The rate may exceed the Constant Yield tax rate. A little bit of housekeeping. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill 2316.
An ordinance concerning subdivision and development expedited review program.
All right, Mr. Marzick, do we have anything else to say? I know we've had work sessions, several different meetings.
Nothing to add, Mr. Chairman.
Couple of different amendments coming in. All right, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on 2316? Seeing no movement, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of 2316.
An ordinance concerning subdivision and development expedited review program.
We do have several amendments. I believe we're going to withdraw amendment number 10, as long as Mr. Walker's okay with that.
We're withdrawing it?
We are, because we have amendment 11.
Oh, my bad. Yes, you're right. I got that over here.
Good.
I was confusing that one with Mr. Grassley's bill. I apologize. Yes, I'm good.
All right, amendment number 10 will be withdrawn. We're going to add amendment number 11. Madam Secretary, please read...
This amendment establishes a rotation list of certified reviewers and requires referral by rotation by the Office of Planning and Zoning and the Department of Inspections and Permits.
Do you have a motion to adopt? So moved.
Second.
There was a second in there as well. Very good. Mr. Walker?
It basically is the amendment that we discussed in our very first council meeting, sets up a rotation as described in the language read by the secretary.
Very good. Mr. Marzick?
We're fine with the amendment.
Anyone from the council? Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Grassley.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Perutka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number 11 is passed. Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, amendment number eleven has passed.
All right. We'll hear that at the next council meeting. That is the last amendment I have, right?
Right.
Yep. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill twenty-four sixteen.
An ordinance concerning zoning, personal fitness studio, water-based.
Mr. Walker, anything else to add to that?
Thank you. I have nothing more to add, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Administration, have anything else to add?
No, sir.
No? Very good. Open up the public hearing. Anyone here wishing to speak on bill twenty-four sixteen? Seeing no movement, public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution, I'm sorry, bill twenty-four sixteen.
An ordinance concerning zoning, personal fitness studio, water-based.
Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, bill twenty-four sixteen as amended has passed.
Please read bill twenty-six sixteen.
An ordinance concerning Board of Appeals, Administrative Hearing Officer, Subdivision and Development and Zoning Notice Requirements.
Very good. Mr. Marzick, anything to add to this?
I will just add, Mr. Chairman, that we will be offering three amendments at the appropriate time.
Very good. Anything from the council? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on bill twenty-six sixteen? Seeing no movement, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of twenty-six sixteen.
An ordinance concerning Board of Appeals, Administrative Hearing Officer, Subdivision and Development and Zoning Notice Requirements.
I do see we have three amendments. Madam Secretary, please read the title of amendment number five.
This amendment removes proposed changes to the submission requirements for site development plans.
Have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all right. Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick, the county executive's office. Amendment number five is to address the issue, I believe it was raised by either Mr. Pruski or Ms. Tate during the last hearing. And the question was raised as to why this section was put into the bill. And after consideration, we didn't have a reason as to why it was put in the bill. So, we'd like to have it removed from the bill.
Very good. Any discussion? Madam Secretary, please call a roll.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, amendment number five has passed.
Please read amendment number six.
This amendment changes the time for mailing of notice of community meetings for certain development activity to thirty days.
Mr. Adap?
So moved. Second.
Second, very good.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, this amendment was to clarify, there was some confusion after we put this in. We originally had this twenty-one business days, and there was some confusion as to what defines a business day. And other sections of the code also refer to thirty days, and we thought it would be clear, essentially twenty-one business days is thirty days, but we want to be clear in the code that it is thirty business days that we're looking to do this. So, we decided to change this back, or offer the amendment to change it back to thirty days to make it clear.
Very good. Any comments from the council?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Pruski?
Isn't the Board of Appeals have thirty days listed in their rules too, Mr. Tom? Isn't that how it's listed when they send out notices on the bottom? When you look?
I'm not, I'm not sure, Mr. Pruski. Perhaps.
Lori Blair can talk.
I think it's congruent with that. If I can recall, it says thirty days as well, so.
That may be, that may be correct, but I don't, I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Any other discussion? Please call a roll.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, amendment number seven has passed.
Please read amendment number eight.
This amendment adds a mailing provision for any person requesting a mailed copy of website notices.
Mr. Adap?
So moved. Second.
Very good. Mr. Pruski?
Yeah, just briefly, no prompt required. I had a community association reach out to me. A gentleman wanted to ensure that they're on the list, and there are several community associations that do not have email or access to. And this is a mail opt-in provision. So what we're doing is, kind of a compromise, we're not making the mailing still required, but it's allowing anybody who still wants to receive it, who doesn't have internet. And what kind of brought this up is when Skip All from the library came and presented to the council saying there's a certain number of people that don't have internet. So we want to make sure we cover everyone, and I think it's a compromise on that end, so.
All right. Mr. Marzick?
We're okay with this amendment.
Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, amendment number eight has passed.
Please read amendment number nine.
This amendment adds provisions to ensure data compiled pursuant to Articles seventeen and eighteen is available upon request.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Very good. Mr. Pruski?
Again, just to follow up, this came from an email prompt of the council being able to get the list annually, so we can just check if anybody has a concern. And when I was a Board of Ed member, this can be FOIA'd, this list as well, so it's public information anyways, it just codifies what's there. Thank you.
What, it requires them to give the info to who?
Annually to the council. So we would get a list of the, or anyone who asks for it. But it could be FOIA'd anyways, the list that's sent in to the constituent service office.
So the constituent services collects the data, and then they have to share it with us?
Correct. And it could be FOIA'd right now anyways, a citizen, if they wanted to add it, they can do that. This just codifies that.
So they do all the work, and we get all the benefit?
Well, it's our constituents as well.
Actually, they're getting a lot of benefit from the bill, I think.
Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, we'd actually reject this amendment, and I think, I talked to, I appreciate Mr. Pruski sharing the amendment with us earlier, and we've talked with him about this. I think our concern is from a practical standpoint of constituents in our county providing their information, personal contact information to the county executive's office for an intended purpose, in this case for notifications, or if it's for another case. And then having that information being spread out to whomever, in this case, I guess the council or anyone else who asked for that information, obviously, if you're, I'll take your word for it, that it can be done through the Freedom of Information Act. But the big concern is that this information, once it leaves our hands, it could be used for any purpose. And I think just from a service-to-the-constituent standpoint, that we don't feel it'd be appropriate that, you know, Councilman, I won't use Smith, because that's someone's name, but Councilman Joe could then, could then take that information and start sending out, you know, a newsletter to this constituent list, any other information he or she wishes to send out. And also, it could be used for inappropriate purposes. It could be used for campaign emails, or things of that nature, which, once it leaves our control, obviously, from where it's coming from, that we would prefer that we have the ability to give this list out. Like I said, we would give this list out, but I think to codify that we're required to give it out, we'd prefer that the list is being used for the appropriate purposes. And also, in addition, this information is listed on.
Pardon me?
It's this information on the, on the HOAs, with each of the HOAs is maintained, and it's listed on the county website currently. It's just the contact information, and the information beyond that is not currently listed. I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Walker?
Mr. Marzick, I mean, all of the hypothetical scenarios that you laid out could also be done by the county executive's office. I mean, I, you know, I mean, they could. And I just, I mean, from my perspective, I think it's easy to add, you know, language on there when people are signing up to say that, you know, this, this list will also be shared with members of the county council. Whoa. Letting them know in advance that, that when they sign up, that it'll be shared with us also. And that it's also available through Freedom of Information Act.
Can I just clarify? We're going to, we, if this moves in this direction, where we'll be giving, be required to give you the contact information, meaning like the president of the HOA, their private email, their telephone number, because we do retrieve that from some folks. That will be for, I just want to clarify that. That's going to be for legal mailings only. I will have to generate separate documents, because we get email, and we get requests, I just want to see your newsletter. Not everyone wants a copy of the legal mailing. So just understand that you, if this moves forward, you will be getting an expansion of what's online today. Just with that, if we can retrieve the HOA contact information, you will get their personal information, their email, and their phone number. That's the extent of it.
But we represent those areas, too. I mean, we represent those HOAs, just like the county executive does.
No, and that's fine.
And if you wanted to reach out to them or contact them for some reason, it might be helpful to them, to have us have the ability to reach out to them.
Well, actually, I think we should all probably merge all our documents, and we'd have a really great working document across the county from all seven council offices. I mean, these are housekeeping things, these are procedures in-house, like business practices.
Just out of curiosity to either one of the sponsors, anyone that supports it, why, what would we do with, with these lists? I mean, these people have signed up for a legal document. It's like when you give up your email address to whatever, to Amazon, you know, they promise not to sell your email address. You know, you signed up for one specific reason. These folks have signed up for one specific reason, they're not necessarily interested in hearing from us.
I think that you could put, in my, in my opinion, you could, like I said, put a disclaimer in there so that when they are signing up, they understand that it is past us. And in a lot of cases, I mean, I'll have, in my own area, we just had a situation with a piece of property that was trying to be developed that a large majority of the community was opposed to. So being able to alert people and reach out to folks to let them know when certain things are coming into the area, I think would be beneficial to those folks, because they want to know when there's, when something's happening.
But most of us have those lists in our, in our, in our organizations.
I don't have those lists. No, I don't.
Yeah. Mr. Fink? Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, can I respond?
Sure.
So what prompted this is I actually had an association reach out to me, that gentleman sent me an email, and he wasn't getting the email list. And I wouldn't know, because based upon the, the information that's currently on the county website, it says the HOA and the address. It does not provide any additional information. If I would have had the contact information in the email, who it's being sent to, I would be able to address that on my own. And again.
Well, you wouldn't. You'd have to still send it upstairs and say, please add so-and-so, because.
But if I had the list annually, I wouldn't even have to answer them, and I would know who's there.
But you need the legal mailing.
Well, that, that's something that's sent out from them. I'm just saying, this is adding to us to be able to have the list and have it. And again, we, somebody could FOIA it, it's just going to take a cost and also time to go through the law office and request it.
The purpose for us to have a list is to communicate with the constituents who have not asked for the communication. They've asked for legal mailings only. And we're, we on the council want to say, we want the information, because we want to communicate with them, for whatever reason we may have.
I think it's what Ms. Schrum said, which I'm open to, is that we just are sharing information.
Well, that would be, I think, a separate document. I mean, maybe the, the county executive's office has a document with HOAs that's different than people that have signed up for a legal mailing specifically. And if that's what we're talking about, folks that have not signed up for a specific legal document, sharing that information, I think that's different. But people that have given us their, given us, given the county, the administration, their contact information for one specific purpose, to then share it with the council who has nothing to do with that purpose, I think is a misuse of their information. And if there is another document, which I believe there is, that has HOAs in a county, I mean, you know, would that suffice?
And if I can offer, there's going to be an administrative step needed here. I'm going to have to reach out to everyone that we're presently communicating with. And if this moves forward, where I'll be, will be required to forward that list to you on an annual basis, I'm going to have to notify these people of this change and ask for their permission to retain them on this list. They'll, I need to notify them if this moves forward. So know that, you know, we are going to communicate, we're going to hopefully, I know I'm going to ask everyone to acknowledge receipt, so this is going to be a really good cleanup step. At the same time, we might have people reject receiving anything in the future, because the fact that we're not controlling their personal information.
Right. So anything that this council uses that list for is junk mail. We're sending those folks junk mail, junk email, because they did not ask for it. And we basically forced our way onto that list by legislating it. Mr. Perutka?
May I ask, and I'm thinking, Ms. Blair, maybe you can answer this, please. And not that this will be determinative of my decision here, but I'm curious, it's been stated here that, that this would be discoverable under an FOIA request anyway. Is that, would that be your opinion?
I, sorry, Lori Blair Klassmeyer, Office of Law. I, I took a quick look at the Public Information Act, and I didn't see anywhere where it, there would be an exception to the Public Information Act if a citizen would request this particular document. If it's in, you know, whether it's in documentary form or electronic format.
So it would be, and you're believing it would be discoverable?
I believe it would be, yes.
If in fact, well, let me ask you this, if the facts were changed a little bit, and at the collection point, they were, they said that they didn't want it discoverable, is that, does that change anything? Or is it, is it once the county executive has it, everybody has it?
There are certain claims you can make, as far as confidentiality and the like, but that doesn't mean you're going to win on the confidentiality. In other words, unless it is of a particular category of information, I can call anything confidential, but ultimately, what it's going to come down to is whether it really and truly is. The only thing in the Public Information Act is employee addresses and phone numbers are, county employee addresses and phone numbers are protected under the Public Information Act, but general citizen information is not.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Ms. Schrum, just kind of my last question, Mr. Marzick, I don't know who's best to answer this question, but people that sign up for the, under this, would the administration turn around and use their, their contact information for the monthly newsletter?
No, not for legal mailings. When we ask people for information, we actually have, they identify what they want to receive from us.
So then, if, there's a whole nother list to use to communicate other things. I mean, when they sign up for legal mailings, all they're getting is legal mailings.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Trumbauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, this amendment does a couple different things, though, if I'm understanding it correctly. It, the seventeen to eleven sets up the bit about the constituent service correspondence, but doesn't eighteen to one twelve, that, does that do something different? Or is that, or is that the same?
I think it's the same.
It's the same. It's just in, it's in seventeen and eighteen.
And different information, right.
Okay. So, but the part, so in both of those sections, Part B for applications, where it states that all applications pursuant to this title are available for public inspection, is that, is that not found in the existing code? I mean, is, is that a clarification on what would be susceptible to PIA requests? Or is, is this just copying existing language and putting it in this code?
Ms. Trumbauer, if I may, for the record, I'm Larry Tom, planning and zoning officer. This amendment, as I read it, this is going to make this a requirement of my office, as well as the Department of Inspections and Permits. We don't currently do this.
Okay.
Right now, the, the list of, the list of HOAs is maintained by the Office of Constituent Services.
I'm not sure, I apologize, I'm not sure what the word "application"
Yeah, that's what the. Yeah, that's what the room is.
refers to, because Title II of Article 17 is just the general provisions for subdivision and development.
Right.
And I believe that's what 18 to is also for zoning.
For zoning.
So I'm not sure what, when I first read it, I was thinking maybe it had something to do with the application to be on the list. So I don't really know what, I didn't draft it, so I don't know exactly what's intended.
Well, okay, so let me give you some more context. So we just amended another bill, 2316, which we've had a considerable discussion about transparency, and you'll remember last meeting I asked what was PIA-able, if I can make a verb out of that. And so now I see this language, and I, and it appears to me to affect the PIA proportion, or the PIA, which I'm very much in support of. I want people to have access. I'm less concerned about whether I as the council get it, but that seems to be the gist of this bill. So I was just trying to figure out exactly what that would do to 17 and 18, but it sounds like you're a little unclear as well, or at least on what application means.
Right, and I think that, I think that it's somewhat redundant if the purpose is to make it PIA-able, because I think it already is, without saying it.
Yeah, the thing about saying it, though, is it's right there, and you can show people, you know?
Right.
And, I mean, honestly, it's a little different from someone saying, "Well, you could PIA it. If it's in the code, it's in the code." So that's, I'm thinking out loud, I'm blabbling now, but I think you see where I'm coming from.
But then the issue is, do you need to put everything in the code that, no, because the PIA tells you, any public record, unless it fits into these couple exceptions.
Right, right, we're getting into like the scene from A Few Good Men, where does it tell you where to eat dinner? I mean, I get it, I get it.
Right, so, so I thought that...
You can't.
Yeah, I can handle the truth, but thank you.
I just felt that was a tad redundant.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Walker.
Ms. Trump, with regards to, you mentioned there's a checkbox for the county executive's newsletter, there's a checkbox for legal requirements. Am I understanding that somebody's able to go in and say, "Here's my email, and here are the things that I'd like to, here are the things I'm interested in receiving"? Is that, is that the way this is going to be, I mean, we haven't seen a demo, as I recall, I don't have, I don't have a, I don't have the website up or anything like that. Is it operational, or can you describe to me what it looks like when somebody's going to log in?
Well, it's my, you mean when someone self-subscribes for the legal mailing? Is that, is that what you're referring to?
You mentioned earlier, though, you said that, like, as I recall, I thought, I heard you say, like, they can checkbox for the newsletter, or they can checkbox for the...
Well, Councilman Walker, that's a contact, constituent contact sheet that we drafted and we use in our office, our constituent services officers, when they go out to the field and they meet community. We ask people, "If you'd like to receive our newsletter, fill out the contact sheet." And then some people are very restrictive, they only give you, you know, so much. So presently now, the legal mailing list that we're working with is strictly off of the HOA list that we inherited and we've been maintaining, which we did our best to clean it up last summer, and we have the same thing in process right now, too. But moving forward, we will be taking other steps to retrieve information, but I want to make it very clear to whoever's completing that contact information sheet, what they're providing and for what purposes.
Right, so, so I guess my point in that is that, just like I sort of said at the beginning, just like you have on your little sheet where you say, "You can sign up for this, you can sign up for that, you can sign up for this," you could put a box in there that says, "You can sign up for legal mailing, you can sign up for the county executive's newsletter, you could sign up for contact from your council member," or whatever. I mean, there's, that's possible.
So why would the, why would the executive branch be soliciting emails for county council?
Well, it's the county's email, it's not, I mean, it's the county's website, not the administration's website.
Presently, the IT has set up, you know, I'll call it, they created the software to generate this weekly email if you self-subscribe for the legal mailing. Let's go back to legal mailing. When they go to self-subscribe, they're going to be self-subscribing for a legal mailing. If they want our constituent service newsletter, they'll have to go to our webpage and sign up to receive the newsletter. We're not going to be mixing all the different reasons for communication with people. This is strictly legal mailings.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, and I'm talking off the top of my head, whether or not this amendment moves us a little bit further from the intent of the bill.
That's exactly what it does.
And I think, again, the intent of the bill is just to clarify legal mailings, I mean, who receives that information and how that information is distributed to those who want it. But I think we've been adding, perhaps this is one amendment to many, and I just don't know how this is going to work necessarily.
And just be advised that, under Title II, general provisions, where it says contact data, information available upon request, there's no procedure where upon the closure finals on a subdivision, and people moved into the neighborhood, and the developer sits as the HOA, and now turns it over to the community, and you've got a president and vice president. There's no requirement for that developer to communicate with planning and zoning, these are the folks you want to reach out to. We're on our own, just like the council offices are on your own, knowing who your constituents are and where the new neighborhoods are. We don't have a mechanism that drives that information to us. We have to be out meeting people to retrieve the information.
Yeah. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Perutka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
I just see four smiley faces down there looking at me. Ah, you guys, killing me.
Killing yourself.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
A four and the affirmative, three and the negative, Amendment Nine passes.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill, we'll hear this bill at our next council meeting in June. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill 2816.
An ordinance concerning zoning alcoholic beverage uses in packaged goods stores.
All right, anything else to be said on this? Mr. Marzick?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing to add.
Does the council have anything else to add to this conversation? Seeing none, we'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on 2816? Yes, so you please state your name and address for the record, keep your marks to mind.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening, good evening, I'm the counsel, I'm Seiger Williams.
I got it.
You ready? Seiger Williams, I'm an attorney with an address of 2709 Summer View Way, Reva, which is off of Reva Road in Annapolis. I understand there's going to be amendments to the bill later, and the question I had, Mr. Chairman, and I wonder if you could direct this question, if you would, to the staff, I've spoken briefly to Mr. Swain about it, is in one part of the bill, specifically on page four, lines 16 and 17, there's this word that in legal circles often results in a number of interpretations, and it's a very large word spelled O-R, or. And the line I'm referring to reads, "And for a restaurant with off-sales or a packaged goods store." And the concern is, does that "or" refer to a restaurant, or is it also, or is it, does this term "packaged goods store" separately? In other words, is there an intent to create a one-mile separation between packaged goods stores? And if that intent is not part of this legislation, then I would suggest you could make that clear by saying, "A restaurant with off-sales or a restaurant with a packaged goods store." And that would eliminate any ambiguity. And again, perhaps Mr. Swain, Mr. Tom could address that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, public hearing on the bill 2816 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of 2816.
An ordinance concerning zoning alcoholic beverage uses in packaged goods stores.
We do have an amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Two.
This amendment eliminates the distance restriction from public parks from the conditional use conditions for packaged goods stores.
Do you have a motion to adopt?
So move.
And there's a second on Mr. Walker's part. Mr. Grasso?
Pretty much what it says, it does. It goes right along, this amendment coincides county law with state law. State law doesn't, doesn't stop parks as being an issue, whether you have a liquor store or not, but it does tell you from schools, and it does say from religious facilities. So we're relying ourselves to mimic state law, make things easy. So that's what we're doing.
Very good. Mr. Marzick?
I have nothing to add, we have no...
Nothing to add? Any questions from, or any comments from the council? Please call the roll.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Perutka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment Number Two has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Three.
This amendment reduces the area for restaurant off-sales use or packaged goods stores use on the same property to 15% of the floor area of the restaurant with a 1,000-square-foot limit.
Mr. Grasso, may I have a motion to adopt?
So move. Second.
Second, stay there, Mr. Grasso.
Same, and what this amendment over here is, is that in off-sales of, off-sales of restaurants, 49% is supposed to be liquor, and 51% is supposed to be food. So by putting the 50% level in there, if you have a large place, you don't want the whole place to wind up becoming a liquor store, and then a little bit being the restaurant. So what we did is, we did 15% of the floor space, and we went 1,000 feet as a maximum floor, being that the average liquor store is around 2,400, 2,500 square feet. I think council heard the previous gentleman last time here, that testified from the Liquor Association, that he would rather it be a little bit less than that. So we want people to succeed in business, that's the biggest thing. We don't want to be too restrained, but in the same token, someone who has a restaurant that wants to move in under the same entity, on the same piece of property, and they want to start, become part of a liquor store, you want to keep the playing field fair for other peoples, because otherwise then, we should allow liquor stores to start selling food, to make it fair to them. And so this just clarifies, you know, how big of an area we're willing to go with, and of course you've got to have a limit, so we went 15%, 1,000.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Trumpbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So to sponsor, 15%, I mean...
Of the total, the total operating space.
Yeah, but is that a, was that based on some calculation or some kind of known number?
Actually, what happened was, is the administration came down, Mr. Swain came up with that, so I don't know if he just took a...
Oh, well, if it's a Swain number, that's all good.
Yeah, I think he just, he might, he probably just took it there, just threw it out there, that's the 15%. And originally was 400 square feet instead of 1,000, and then we started thinking, I said, "Okay, well, if you have like a 14,000-square-foot restaurant, and we give them 15%, that's huge." So then that's what we turned around and said, "Okay, but if you have a small restaurant, you give them 15%, you know, and maximum of 1,000, it seems a little bit more in line."
I got you. So, if I might, so, I mean, I like, I like this amendment. Mr. Swain, can you elaborate on 15%? Was that, was that just kind of it made sense, or is there anything behind that?
It seemed reasonable.
Okay, that's fair, that's fine, thanks.
Actually, may I ask a question, I guess, to Mr. Swain or Mr. Grasso? The floor area of the restaurant?
Hmm, good question.
I just thought of that. Is that defined in any way, or?
In the zoning code, it's defined.
It is defined.
Floor area is defined.
Okay.
And what is it? How is it defined? Is it the area where the tables are located? Because I was thinking there's calculations in the back, and storage, and refrigeration, and...
It's probably going to be the entire...
Total space, I imagine.
The total establishment?
Total establishment.
Okay.
Everything enclosed?
Party wall, the party wall.
Everything enclosed.
So it would include the kitchen?
Wine cellar?
The patio?
Wine cellar?
No, not the, probably not.
I was just thinking, I was just thinking the green turtle patio with the...
Now you're talking, keep thinking of turtles.
And the little heat lamps with a cigar right there, right?
Exactly, now we're talking, now we're talking.
It is wall-to-wall.
Wall-to-wall, cool, thank you.
All right, any other questions, concerns, comments, thoughts? Please call the roll.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Perutka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment Number Three has passed.
I didn't say aye, but aye.
Yeah, I thought I heard it.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Four.
This amendment specifies that the restrictions on a packaged goods store use in, use on the same property as a restaurant must also be under common ownership as the restaurant.
Mr. Grasso?
I think that's, that pretty much spells itself, because you could have a piece of property, and it could be two entities. And so what everybody seem to feel is that the person who is operating the restaurant, the packaged goods store, is going to be under the same name as them, then it should match. It shouldn't be a packaged good, one name, and a restaurant another name. And this is really reality, what we're doing is trying to protect the packaged goods stores from having a fair deal of things. So by not having the other name there, then we could have another issue, they can just do what they want, because then it's not connected to the restaurant any longer.
Motion to adopt?
Chair.
So move.
Second? I'll second. Mr. Smith?
Oh, there it is. Do we know how many businesses this one is going to affect, or are there any in the pipeline that, that this would probably prevent them from setting up the establishment? Do we know?
That would be difficult to ascertain. We only track variances and special exceptions and not permits.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Grasso, when this bill started, I thought a lot of it had to do with just bringing the state law into county code, is that right? And were we still doing that with these amendments?
Yes.
So this is part of state law that we're just bringing into...
Yeah, because what's happening is, is that Article 2B, some of you folks might have seen that, the 2B was designed, once again, to restaurant, people were going to the General Assembly complaining that they couldn't make enough money, and that constituents wanted to be on the property, wanted to maybe take home some of the wine that they may have opened up or liked the flavor of wine. So the General Assembly said to these restaurants, of course approval from the Liquor Board, that they could off-sell. And so what was happening was, is that these restaurants, not only were they off-selling, they were turning around and migrating to actually becoming a liquor store. And the definition, the supposedly off-selling is, is that it's a patron that was already inside the restaurant that was already consuming product of that restaurant, wanted to take home a bottle, or a growler, or whatever the case, from that establishment, after already being in there, wanted to take it home. And so that was the intention, my belief is, of Article 2B, and some of these establishments have taken it to a whole different level, to where they've actually started migrating to becoming a packaged goods store, without even consent of the Liquor Board, and then, of course, affecting businesses that are nearby them, it doesn't have a fair shake with anything, because, you know, we keep using Crofton Liquors and Poncho Pete's as an example, but Crofton's Liquors is, their sole business is liquor. Poncho Pete's is liquor and restaurant. So I'm saying that, hey, if you're going to allow them to do that, then I suggest we allow all the liquor stores to start selling pizzas and subs. That's the way I'm saying, keep it fair for everybody. So that's, that's the whole intentions.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Pruski.
So I just want to follow up, if we were to pass this amendment, and again, I want to go to the law office with this, the interpretation. We mentioned Poncho and Pepe's, or whatever, whatever group that has this, I mean, what we're doing here is basically saying that if they have two entities now, they can't have that, I understand the intention. But I'm just wondering, I mean, could they sue the county and say, "You allowed us to have this, we, we have this already, now you're taking it away, and you're totally going to remove my ability to do business"? I just want to be clear on...
Mr. Pruski, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Pruski, we're not retroing this, so if they've already had a packaged good license by the Liquor Board, they are fine. But if they're operating illegally, not only are they breaking state law, they're also breaking county law. But if they've already got their license, they're good to go. And I think Mr. Walker would know, I think this Poncho Pete's already has, yeah, they already have licenses, we're not retroing this.
Okay, so it's forward.
Yeah, it's going forward.
So they'd be not legal, non-conforming use.
That's it.
All right, any other questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Perutka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Let's just say aye for Poncho Pete.
Poncho Pete.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Okay, seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment Number Four has passed.
Please read Amendment Number Five.
This amendment adds language that excludes the sale of packaged goods exclusive to the restaurant from the one-mile restriction and the floor area restriction.
Motion to adopt?
So move.
Second.
And there's a second. Mr. Grasso?
You want to take this one, or you want me to shoot on it?
Sure, whatever you want to do, Mr. Grasso.
Okay, Mr. Walker brought a, a good point here. One of, one of the issues that he was having, I guess, with his constituents, were that some of them were actually restaurants, but they were packaging their own wine, or perhaps growlers, let's take a craft of a micro beer. And that could, I guess, some people could make the argument, "Well, if you're turning around and you're actually taking a growler and putting it in a package, now you're really a packaged goods store, and you're not within a mile, so you can't do this." So Mr. Walker brought up a, a good point, that these people that actually package their own product, their own beer right there on spot, or their bottle of wines, we shouldn't be affecting them, because that's really what Article 2B was all about, was to allow restaurants to be able to sell off the product that they have while a patron was in there. And so I believe Mr. Walker's intent was just to codify it a little bit better, so that it couldn't be misconstrued as if they're making something and packaging it, then they're actually a packaged store, and now they're against the law to be doing that. I believe that's what our intent was.
That's correct. We do have a motion. Administration, anything?
I don't have any to...
I'm going to just ask my question on public to Ms. Tate. I've got three liquor licenses in this county, and when this, when this bill started, it had absolutely nothing to do with my liquor licenses, and now I'm worried that it's morphing closer and closer to my liquor licenses. So would I be conflicted out? And I know you're not an ethics attorney, but...
Just abstain.
Yeah, I'll do that, I'm going to sustain from this room.
You don't have off-sale license, though, right?
I don't have an off-sale license, but we're getting, I mean, we're getting closer and closer with this amendment.
You can abstain before the final vote.
We're not the final votes.
Fair enough.
You've got time to ask.
I think you're fine, Mr. Fink, but...
Ethics.
Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Perutka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Sustained.
Six in the affirmative and one abstention, Amendment Number Five passes.
Oh, shoot. All right, this bill has been amended, so we will hear it in June. Madam Secretary, please read the title of 2916.
An ordinance concerning lease of certain county-owned property that is currently used to operate public library facilities and a headquarters facility to the Public Library Association of Annapolis in Anandale County.
Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick in the county executive's office, with me at the table is Skip Ald from the library, Christine Romans from Central Services, and Jason Federman from the Office of Law. Bill 2916 requests council, or requests approval by the council of a lease of the facilities the public library currently has with the Office of Central Services. The library is a privately held organization and not a unit of county government, as you all know, but the library does receive annual appropriations from the county. The library has operated, library facilities in the county for more than 50 years, and these facilities are operated on county-owned land. The lease clarifies the maintenance responsibilities and allows the library to sell the naming rights to these leased facilities. Two facilities that are not included in this lease is they are not owned and fee simple by the county, which is the Severn, the Provinces Library, and also the Mountain Road Library. Separate subleases will be prepared for these two locations and submitted to the council for approval at the appropriate time. As I mentioned, this was a request coming from the library system, so I will turn it over, Mr. Ald, to give his two sentences.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Marzick. Chairman, council members. I do also have the vice president of our Foundation Board of Directors here with us. That's Lisa Hillman, as well as the former treasurer of our Foundation Board, Don Rowland, who is on our Board of Trustees and the Foundation Board at this time. And in addition, Anne Glenn is the executive director of our foundation, and was hired in 2014. I want to give you some background on how we came to this point and why we are requesting this. Essentially, it's because we're just about to launch a campaign, an asset-building campaign that will be a $3 million campaign. It's called Beyond Your Expectations: The Campaign for the Library. This is a mock-up of the case statement that we will be getting together within the next few weeks. This has been in the works for about a year and a half. When I arrived here a little over five years ago, in November 2010, we had a foundation that at the time was about three years old. It has been successful in that every year it has raised $100,000 or $200,000. It's been more that's been raised each year. Recently, we had a great event for the love of the library that netted $51,000. However, when we're devoting such significant resources to this foundation in the way of the staffing and all of the other resources, all the money that is raised goes to enhance the library, to build upon what the county and the state can provide us in the way of resources. But we needed our foundation to really kick it into a higher gear in order to raise significantly more funding. And so we hired a firm to do a feasibility study in the first part of 2015 to determine, I think, the question at that time that we tested in the local philanthropic market, to put it that way, is can we raise $5 million-plus in a fundraising campaign, in a major asset-building campaign? They came back to us, that firm was called CCS, they came back to us and said, "We think you can raise $1.5 million." Subsequently, we went out and hired a consulting firm to help us with the management of this campaign. That is a firm called Dew East Partners, and the primary person working with us is Beth Langbein, formerly the executive director of the Community Foundation of Annapolis County. So Beth has been working with Anne Glenn, our executive director, and our Foundation Board of Directors over the past year. They started really in earnest back last summer. One of the key pieces of advice that we had was that we need to, and especially knowing that the new Annapolis Library was coming on board, that the new Rivera Beach Library was coming on board, and we hope other major libraries will come on board in renovations and that kind of thing. One of the main things that would make this campaign successful would be to provide incentives to potential donors to have either meeting rooms, or study rooms, or book drops, or all kinds of parts of these buildings, in addition to the building itself, named for them, you know, after they had made some sort of a donation to us. And we have defined exactly what those donations are and that kind of thing. So in December, our Board of Trustees, not the Foundation Board, the Board of Trustees adopted a named gift policy. I emailed that policy to the council members about a week or two ago, and that spells out the parts of that policy and that kind of thing. At that point, we determined we really needed to work with the county to get this, you know, exactly how this would work. And so I contacted Nancy Duden at the Office of Law in late December in order to try to get this process rolling. We were, at that time, thinking the campaign would start in January or February, but it has taken us this long, because we really have to have this in place before we can really move forward. So at that point, let's see, we work, oh, we have had for a number of years a memo of understanding with county central services, particularly the facilities maintenance division. And so in addition to working with the Office of Law, we worked with Christine Romans very intensely in redefining the responsibilities between the library and the FMD Facilities Management Division. So that became part of this contract that got reviewed. It got signed by Mark Hartzell and by Hall Worthington, who's the chair of the Library Board, about a month or so ago, and then it came to you all for approval. I think that spells out, oh, I did want to mention also, there are precedents nationally, but also in the state, for this type of thing. Calvert County, the Prince Frederick Library, has had a significant fundraising campaign. Many parts of their Prince Frederick Library are named like this. The library in Hagerstown, at Washington County Library, is, the library itself is named, it's the Fletcher Library. And then, let's see, in Ellicott City, the Miller branch of the Howard County Library. And really, the granddaddy of them all, so to speak, is the Enoch Pratt Library. The Central Library on Cathedral Street was founded in the 1880s based on a massive donation by Enoch Pratt, who was a major mercantile person within the city of Baltimore. So with that, I'm available to answer questions. And also, there may be some questions that Ms. Hillman, or Ms. Glenn, or Mr. Rowland may be able to respond to as well, if that's appropriate.
I'm sure we're going to see a Grasso building here in your future.
Yes.
He loves his name on buildings.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Walker.
Mr. Ald, a couple of things, and I kind of gave you a heads up. I was going to ask these questions.
Okay.
So I hope you had time to think.
I've had a lot of time to think.
You know, as you know, the Crofton Library, excuse me, the reason, the main reason Crofton Library exists today is because of the councilman who sat in this seat many years ago, John Klocko. And I know that there was, after his death, just short of the end of his second term, I think he was around my age, there was an effort to name the library there in Crofton after him, because he was so instrumental in making sure that that library was built. I think, as you mentioned, that was him and Councilman Rice at the time, who worked on both the Crofton Library and Odenton Library. And I know there was an effort to do that, and it was sort of rejected by the board, as I understand it, at the time, and instead, they opted for naming the road there, the street and the entrance to the library. I guess there's, I could see, I've heard from some folks who are sensing some frustration about that issue in particular, that, you know, he was the one who sort of spearheaded the fact that that library was built. And I just didn't know if you had any comment about that specifically.
Well, I thank you for the question, Mr. Walker. I have heard about Mr. Klocko, and I understand from Barbara Maxwell, formerly Samur Isaac, she was on council with him, and she is on our, actually, she's on the Foundation Board and the Board of Trustees, and Bert Rice is on our Board of Trustees. So I've heard some stories about those days and what was going on with issues for the council. I obviously can't speak for exactly why they chose not to do that at the time. I don't know that they had had any experience with a foundation at the time. The foundation was created in 2007, and typically, naming in library buildings comes as a result of philanthropic donations and that type of thing. But I don't know why. I know that it certainly would have been a great honor for Mr. Klocko to name that building for him. I just can't speak to why that was the place now. And frankly, with this policy, this would not even open that up for someone, let's just say, well, I'll just say, for example, Mr. Fink or Mr. Trumbauer, who were very interested in getting the new Rivera Beach and new Annapolis Libraries. Now, it's a whole different era now, but it would be a different kind of thing.
You mean you don't want a Trumbauer wing?
I do.
Look, I can't afford one anyway, so you don't have to worry about it.
It's a lot different situation, and as I understand it, it was a terrible tragedy that took the life of Mr. Klocko, and there was a tremendous sentiment to do something to honor him, and it seemed right at the time. I haven't really spoken with Barbara or Bert about exactly their, I don't think Mr. Rice was on council at the time, but I can't speak for them.
I would just ask you to take back to the board and make a suggestion that if there's, you know, in the process of your naming, you know, different buildings and rooms and whatever, that you give some consideration to trying to incorporate his name at some point. Again, I know, I realize I don't have no obligation, this is just my request, if you don't mind mentioning it to the board, now some of them here present.
I will certainly do that.
Appreciate at least them relaying that back to the rest of the board. If there's some mechanism or way to do that, I think it would be appropriate.
Thank you. We definitely will talk about that. We have a lot of possibilities in these buildings. Even in Crofton and Odenton Libraries, there are meeting rooms, there are, I mean, and we certainly would be looking to, I mean, frankly, we're seeking philanthropic donations, and perhaps someone wants to pull some things together to name in honor of someone. That is certainly going to be an appropriate way.
Thank you. The other, well, two other issues. One, I didn't give you a heads up on, and that is the crown at the Crofton Library. I call it the crown, because it's got the metal brackets that are kind of coming out of the side of the library. They're still just as rusty as they were last year, and it looks terrible. So if there's any way we can get Central Services to just go out there and scrape them a little bit and put a coat of paint on them or something. If, when you, when you drive by on Rydell Road, Ms. Romans, the corner of the library is sort of rounded, and so they've actually got like these steel beams that come out. It's kind of strange, it looks like a crown, like, you know, so they come out off the side of the building, and they're just all rusty, and it just looks awful, because the rest of the building looks nice.
Write them a check, and they'll name it after you and clean it up.
Name the crown. The other issue is the email that I think I received, I don't know if other council members did as well, maybe you could address the issue. It was a former board member who was trying to make the argument, I think, that some of this policy changes that the board has proposed was prior to the change of the board makeup, and so I'm assuming you're aware of that letter.
I got this letter today, I think it was emailed to the council members. So I saw that just before this meeting started. It seemed to me there were three issues that were discussed, there are three main issues: board governance, and is the timing right to implement this type of policy. On that issue, the board governance, we had a fantastic process this past summer and fall. Actually, Mr. Rowland was the chair of the Library Board's Governance Committee that, or Governance Task Force, that reviewed and made the recommendations for changes to our bylaws, and you just this evening voted on our first new trustee, actually, it's the second new trustee based on the, it's the first one based on this policy where you all have confirmed. We had a, we, but we're also looking at two vacancies coming up in this summer that will allow us to have two more council-nominated members. So we're moving along on that. The board is transforming, and so to address that, I think, I think we have a, we have a great board, very diverse, changing, and transforming, still maintaining some of the longer-term members. But over the course of the next nine years, we will have a completely new board. Previously, we didn't have term limits, but we will have that in place, so that nine, 10 years from now, we'll have a, everyone will be new for the most part. The second issue was how will the library and county decide on these naming opportunities? These are spelled out, I think that in that letter it was recommended that there be detailed standards, and I think we chose not to put it in that level of detail, but we do have these statements. The board policy says, "The library reserves the right to decline or revoke suggested or existing names or name changes." And the contract that is there for you to okay tonight states that "The county shall have the absolute right of approval of any and all naming rights agreements and signage depicting any such name." So I think that that gives us a pretty good safeguard against any naming that might be inappropriate in any kind of way.
Does the council have the ability to weigh in on that? When you say the county, or is it just...
It's set that the county does.
By the county council, or what?
I am not quite clear on the process. I would ask the Law Office.
No, that would be, that would be the Office of Central Services Real Estate Division that would have the right to weigh in.
Okay. There was a third issue in this letter, which is, as I saw, there may be other primary issues in the mind of the letter writer here, but talking about system-wide naming opportunities, and how would, what's sort of, what's the purpose, and how would that work? The idea there that we thought of, frankly, I think Ms. Hillman was the one who had this idea, it may be that there would be an entity that would like to have its name on all 15 of the book drops, for example, which is a prime real estate. So we set a, kind of set a price on that type of thing, and maybe somebody wants to have sort of a uniform across the board in all of our libraries' naming opportunities. So that's, that addresses that letter to the best of my ability.
Fair enough. Thank you, Ms. Romans.
Mr. Trump.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a couple of questions. One of them, Mr. Walker addressed, which was, who is the county? And so the county, in this case, is Central Services Real Estate. Okay. I mean, that makes me a little tiny bit uncomfortable, but not enough to, I mean, support this. I think anything that gets you guys more money to improve and build our libraries is good. And I'm putting my faith in you that you or the board aren't going to do anything foolish with the naming. I mean, that would, it would just be bad, because...
Yeah, we won't.
Yeah.
We promise.
Right, and, I mean, I believe you, but I just, I just want to clarify, I mean, so I've read through the addendum, I've looked at the U.R. policy of named gifts, and just so that we're all clear, I mean, you say that rooms and areas can be named for individuals, organizations, foundations, or corporations.
Yes.
So, I mean, there could be, you know, the Pepsi-Cola Rivera Beach Library, in theory.
Yes, or the North of Grumman.
I wasn't going to say them, but I, that's exactly where I was going with that.
We probably have a list.
And I'm not saying that's a good or bad thing, I just, I just wanted us all to be aware before we voted on this. Again, I'm trusting the judgment and, you know, of the board. But a couple of kind of technical questions that I had, mostly they can be summed up with one question. Does anything in this lease change the operational component of the libraries now? For instance, does the liability change? Who has to clear snow change? Is anything in this different from what's happening now?
Slight changes, and I think I'd like to let Ms. Romans address that.
Christine Romans, Central Services Officer. Slight changes, as Mr. Ald has said. What we did with, took the opportunity with the lease to kind of clarify some of the roles and responsibilities. So over time, the MOU, the agreements that had been in place between the library staff and Central Services staff had sort of become less clear, so that then, when something happened, we spent a couple of days trying to figure out who's going to take care of it, right?
I think I'm familiar with that.
Yes, so what we did here is just clarified those lines of authority. In short, the best way to think about it is that my staff in FMD will be responsible for the building envelope. The building itself, the roof, HVAC, other major mechanicals, inside, paint, carpet, walls, that would be, that would be on the library.
This is like if your phone line goes down, if it's inside the house, you have to pay for it, if it's outside.
We promise to be much easier to work with.
I'm sure that you will.
They are great to work with.
Okay, and so you're comfortable, and you're comfortable.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm comfortable. So the last question, again, going back to Mr. Walker's point about the Crofton Library, the way I read through this, there's nothing in your policy or this lease that would preclude you from naming it after someone if they gave a $1 gift or something. I mean, right? Again, it's up to your discretion, but the scenario that he's describing, where he asks to be given consideration of naming for Councilman Klocko of some way, there's nothing that precludes you from doing that.
There's nothing in the contract or in the named gift policy that the board adopted that precludes us. Also, our named gift opportunities is a draft, and even this document that I showed you is in drafted. This is the case statement encouraging people to give to certain purposes for the library. They range from technology to the spaces to program. So you're giving for all kinds of things. No, the answer to your question, nothing precludes us. I will take this back to our board, just so they, and frankly, having Mr. Rowland and Ms. Hillman here, it'll be good to have them involved in the discussion to see if there is any way to honor Mr. Klocko, for example.
Sure, okay. Well, yeah, my last comment will be, again, I appreciate the complexity of what it would take, you know, to involve the council in naming opportunities, and I don't think that would be a good idea. But I would say, before the library system went and made a major announcement, the whole system, or perhaps a major branch, it might be a good idea to work with the elected leaders from that area, just to make sure that no feathers would be ruffled.
Oh, we would definitely be doing that. We're extremely sensitive to the interest of each council member and the county executive, and we would be looking to work with all of you on this. It's, we are, we're just chomping at the bit to really get moving on the campaign. We certainly would be extremely thankful for a positive vote on this. But, yeah, we will definitely be sensitive to that, and like with other kinds of things, I mean, we're going to try to get you information before we send out press releases or any of that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ald, I didn't think about it until Mr. Trump brought it up, but how do you see this playing out as far as the name of the library? I mean, we're going to, you know, Rivera Beach Library are going to be gone, we're going to start calling it the North of Grumman Library?
It would probably be called, for example, let's call it, say, the Derek Fink Rivera Beach Library.
Good enough for me, any questions answered.
I think we're going to put the name of the place in conjunction with the name of the individual for whom the library is named. I think we're mainly thinking it's primarily going to be individuals that, you know, at least at this point, that's kind of how we're thinking about it. But if it were a corporation, it would include both the name, because people know the libraries for their place. That's actually why we changed, for example, the North County Library to call it Glenn-Burney, to give it a little more place identification. We will do that. But, for example, we are, we might be answering the phone there as, this is the Fink Rivera Beach Library, or, again, we have to work out some of those details, but it'll have both.
And this could turn obnoxious really quick. You know, when you start naming rooms, it's, you know, fine, you name the book drops, that's fine, you start naming the library after, you know, North of Grumman or Coca-Cola or anyone else, that could turn obnoxious.
Well, we'll do everything we can. First of all, signage, we'll be very careful in how we develop the signage and all the naming, and so we will be trying to do this in really positive aesthetic ways. I can't, I can't think of a better word right now, but, yeah.
That's great. My library don't cost a county anything. Ms. Smith.
Mine's quick. It's just a sort of note. It's interesting, and I'm supportive of this, how the, you guys or the library system has sort of taken on this policy, and the facilities, rooms like that can be changed. And then the school board here recently, within the last year, year and a half, went And then the school board here recently, within the last year, year and a half, went the complete opposite direction, where they sort of prohibited schools from being named after individuals, or, just interesting, just a note, just to sort of throw out that I'm supportive of this. I think there's...
Thank you.
Certainly some, some interest and some value in gaining revenue. But, just to piggyback off of Mr. Trumbauer, certainly, if you could just, you know, CC me, if, you know, down the road, if something is coming along, so...
Oh, you'll know.
And I'll, and I'll support the Peruka Foundation Library. I know they have money to purchase something like that.
Awesome.
So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Dickinson?
Yes, I wanted to go back to what Mr. Federman said about the county meaning Central Services. Is, in the agreement, one of the first sentences is that the county is defined as Anarondale County, Maryland, a body corporate and politic of the state of Maryland. Now, I don't know how that's defined, if it's defined in the charter or whatever, but I don't know if that's just the administration, or if it would involve the council as well.
Well, the, Jason Federman from the Office of Law, Anarondale County, Maryland, Body and Corporate and Politic, that's the legal name for the county itself. With respect to all lease documents, contracts of this nature, anything where the county will be making a decision or something of that nature, it's an executive function which has been delegated by the Office of County Executive, in this particular case, to the Office of Real Estate within the Central Services Department. So hopefully, that clarifies your question.
Yeah, I guess so. It's just that throughout this lease, it says, "The county, the county, the county." And that's what the definition is, so I wanted to hear your reasoning for that.
Thank you. All right, any discussion? Open up the public hearing. I do see we have one person that has signed up for the, for the public hearing, Karen Clacco. And anyone else wishing to speak on Bill 2916, I ask you that you please come forward, and we'll start off with you, Ms. Clacco.
Good evening. I'd like to thank Councilman Walker and Councilman Trumbauer for your kind remarks about my late husband. As everyone knows, my late husband was John J. Clacco III, who served as Anarondale County Councilman, representing the 7th Councilmanic District, from 1994 until his death in 2002. He was an accomplished legislator and an award-winning legislator. One of the hallmarks of his career was the funding and the building of the Crofton Library. He worked tirelessly through two administrations to make that happen. In fact, the last photographs ever taken of him were at the ribbon cutting for the library. Shortly after his death, there was a movement to name the Crofton Library in his honor. Resolution 62-02 to rename the library came before the county council and was unanimously approved. The library board considered the request, but ultimately decided against it. They plainly stated that we do not name libraries after people. The reason was that there had been people in the past who'd worked very hard for the library over the years, and had not had the honor of having a library named after them. The board felt that naming the library after John would be not a good precedent to set. Instead, they placed a plaque in the lobby of the library citing his contribution. Now it seems, if you have enough money, you can have a library named after you. It doesn't require hard work, or dedication, or advocacy for the library. It just requires money. It will be a sad day when the Crofton Library is named after someone other than John. I was gonna say, urge you not to vote for this bill. However, I do feel like it has merit, but I just wanted you to know my feelings. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Clacco. All right. Seeing no other movement in the audience, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 2916.
An ordinance concerning lease of certain county-owned property that is currently used to operate public library facilities.
Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Peruka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill 2916 is passed.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of 3016.
An ordinance concerning zoning, alcoholic beverage uses, and packaged goods stores.
All right. Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick in the county executive's office, with me at the table, Lori Rhodes from Planning and Zoning, and Greg Swain from the Office of Law. Excuse me. Bill 3016 is drafted to correct a problem within the code since 2005. We talked about this at the previous council session, where we actually amended the language of 3016 into Mr. Grasso's Bill 2816. We would like to move forward with this bill, and we would ask for your support with this. The background on this, and Ms. Rhodes or Mr. Swain can give you a little more info, but there's a redundant category of alcohol and beverage uses, and there's not currently a definition of packaged goods stores. Bill 3016 defines as packaged goods stores and clarifies that there are conditional uses in mixed-use areas of the county for these packaged goods stores. So with that, if you have any questions, we would be happy to answer them.
Mr. Chair. Ms. Trumbauer?
I'll yield it, Mr. Smith.
Well, may I, if Ms. Tate could comment on this legislation, just to see, is it mirroring exactly what we just voted on a few minutes ago, or is it...
Well, no, the one we've just voted on two minutes ago is...
That was amended.
More extensive, and sort of includes this, but it has the additional language reference to Mr. Grasso's concerns about the package stores, packaged goods stores, and the off-sales, and their location in relation to these other entities here. But in terms of the zoning language, that was all amended into the other bill. So we're basically hearing this bill, that it's the same as the other bill, plus...
Why don't we hold it?
The items you just voted on.
Well, it's, it's not the same, right? Because we've amended the other bill several times.
Well, that's true. So I guess, you know, the council person can make an election whether they don't like the other bill. They can not vote on that bill, but everyone's voted thus far to amend the other bill. And now we're, so basically, what's gonna happen, presuming everybody still goes forward, you're gonna have another bill on the, on the tail of this one that does the other things. So, and one will have a later effective date, and that, those changes will be effective in the code later than these changes, if you vote on this bill tonight in the affirmative.
Hello, I'm more concerned...
I don't know, that's, it's the administration's bill, so, I mean, they, there, it's their election whether to withdraw it or not, so...
This, if this bill passes, this bill doesn't have any consequences that the other bill, that we took out of the other bill, right? So there's nothing, in other words, if this bill passes, and then the other bill passes, the other bill just adds on the amendments, nothing, nothing goes wrong by passing this bill that we took out in the other bill.
Right. They just layer on top of each other. Mr. Swain can correct me if, differently, but I think it's...
This is, this is the language you all voted for unanimously.
Right. So it's just, what, essentially, what, just what I just said, is if this goes through tonight, and then you vote for Mr. Grasso's bill as amended two weeks from now, or whatever, at the next council meeting, then you just have some language that's effective a couple weeks earlier than the other.
Mr. Chair, is the administration still fully supportive of Mr. Grasso's bill? Like, there isn't any threat of veto of his bill, is there?
Not, not at this point, no. But I guess, we would ask you to vote this bill through for two reasons. One is, we know you support this, because you supported it last time, and it can kinda clear the deck on this. But two, Mr. Grasso's bill has been amended now, I believe, nine times. And I don't know...
It's a Grasso special.
I don't know where the seven councilmen are on that bill, so for those two reasons, we'd like to have this bill, make sure that this is passed, and this is our original intent. This is a bill that we had in back in February, I believe, and we withdrew it to work with Mr. Grasso on his bill, and so we would ask you to support this tonight and push it through.
Is there any intent to modify your bill again, Mr. Grasso, or...
This is it. I don't have nothing else to modify.
Well, that's my concern.
Why don't we just hold it open?
That's also, that's also...
Mr. Chair, can we just hold this bill?
Second.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
My other concern is that something comes up in the next two, next three weeks, that there is some problem with Mr. Grasso's bill, which I don't know what that is. But we actually thought, and was working with Mr. Grasso on his bill, but we thought his bill was finished at the last council meeting. So, I mean, you all obviously support it. I think it's a matter of just passing the bill now, and then we go with Mr. Grasso's bill in three weeks. I don't see any problem with passing the bill tonight.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Trumbauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I understand what you're trying to say, Mr. Marzick, and I mean, I appreciate your point. It seems unusual to me that we've got duplicative language on two bills, that we wouldn't wait to see what happens with, with the main vehicle. I mean, we can hold this for two weeks, we can vote on Mr. Grasso's bill. If that passes, the administration withdraws this bill. If it fails, we just vote on this bill. I just, it seems unusual for me to vote on half of a bill, and then the other half of it the next term, the next meeting. I mean, it's the same endpoint, it's just procedurally, this, this is unusual.
I understand. I mean, you could also just vote on this bill and be done with it, and then take action on Mr. Grasso's bill in three weeks. It's the same...
Yeah, it takes no more effort to hold this bill than it does to vote this bill. I mean, either way, we're going through the entire roadblock, and we're voting, you know, a or n.
Right.
I'd be inclined, just because they're asking for it, to give it a vote, unless the sponsor of the original bill has a problem with that.
As long as there's, there's no sort of vetoing of his bill, I mean, I'm okay with it. I just, I would hate for that to happen.
Mr. Grasso, do you care if we vote on this bill?
It was, it's, Mr. Trumbauer made a good point. You know what I mean? Sometimes it doesn't make sense, but even, as the councilman just knows, I'm guessing everybody's all in favor of my bill, so we're gonna have a 7-0 votes, and not gonna veto it anyway. But Mr. Trumbauer has a good point over there. Why vote for something that we're gonna, we're gonna take care of in two weeks? Why not just hold it? So, I mean, it doesn't matter. It's been advertised, we've already spent the money, so, I mean, we can vote this, and then the council votes my bill, and we go 7-0, and it kills most of this and makes everything right. I'll do whatever you guys want to do. I mean, I'm fine either way.
Ms. Tate?
Just since we spent money to advertise for both of these bills, so we need them here.
We're gonna have a hearing. We're not at the hearing point yet.
But, but, Mr. Chair, but my point is, if we have the hearing, we close the hearing, and we hold the bill, there's no more additional advertising costs, right? We don't advertise a bill, we don't amend.
You have to, if it passes, you have to advertise a final bill, yes. So you would be, you would be, you would be paying to advertise, but that's not, I'm not saying that that's one way to discourage you, do one thing for another.
If we close the public hearing, if we close the public hearing, we don't amend it, but we hold the vote until two weeks, you're saying we have to advertise it again?